Good morning, if you'd rise for the pledge from Commissioner Barth.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the April 30th Commission meeting. I'll remind everybody to silence their cellphones if they will. The meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly over there in the black binder, and if you need a listening device, Robert here in the front row will help you with that. If not, we'll go into routine business.
Routine business. First order of business would be consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I get, I'm going to put Barth first and Mr. Pecus second.
Okay, we'll get you next time, Barth.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any changes? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
The second item would be to approve the county commission minutes of 4:23:13.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Third item today would be the bills to be paid in the amount of $395,687.36. Thirdly, six cents.
Move the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bills. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Barth?
I would just say there is a $72,000 piece of equipment for the highway department at that moment.
Any other comments or questions? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item number four would be reports. We have no reports listed here, so item number five would be personnel. Carrie Dever.
Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. All I have for you this morning is the regular Commission action requests.
Super.
Motion to approve routine action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions for Carrie? Don't let her, let her sit down. If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We're on to item six.
Item number six would be application for abatement. Mr. Hellseth, if you have anything.
Good morning, Commissioners, because I believe this is Commissioner Kelly's. Wanted to bring this back up for reconsideration, so my part's done.
Before we get started with detailed questions and conversations, I've asked the state's attorney for an opinion on bringing this back to us, and because this generally doesn't happen, frankly. Kirsten, if you'd be so kind to summarize what you found.
Sure, thank you, Chairman. I conducted some research on the question that's before you is, and as I understand it, it's the power for the commission to abate property taxes in this situation, and I think the commission's all familiar with the factual background of that. I won't go into that too much. I'll just say, as a legal matter, kind of give you a roadmap of as I understand the question here. The property at issue here was declared property tax exempt under SDCL 10-4-9.1, and that's when a public charity owns the property and it's used as well for charitable purposes. And you may recall, as you sat as the Board of Equalization, you approved that going forward, that that had that status. In the law, there are very limited grounds on which you can do abatement of property taxes after the fact. There are six of them, actually. Only two of them here arguably apply. That's where an error is made in the extension of the tax, or the complaintant in the property are exempt from the tax. Now, you can find that the property was within that charitable exemption. If you find the facts warrant that that was within that exemption during year 2012, when the property taxes attached during 2012, I believe you would have the authority to abate tax year 2012 only, based on the ownership and the use for charitable purpose, if you find that under the facts presented. All the others, it's my legal opinion that you're without authority to abate those, because there's really no evidence that's been given that any of those six grounds apply in years before 2012. Again, I'll reiterate, you extended that property tax exemption from 2013 forward, based on action at equalization, and I'd also remind you that the statute is very clear that you may approve the abatement, so it is within your discretion, even under those circumstances, for 2012.
Thank you, Kirsten. I think that opinion is similar to the one that we received from Gordy way back when, before he left to become a judge. And do you have questions for Kirsten? Commissioner Heiburger?
I just have a comment, although it's a question, and that was that the nonprofit status was not granted, maybe it is a question, until September of 2012? I mean, that's the way I'm reading our minutes.
And that's correct.
Is that what you found, too?
Under case law, that I've found, taxes are considered attaching to a property when they become due, and a lien could attach. For the case of 2012 taxes, that would be on January 1st of 2013.
Okay.
So, it's a status at that point that I think is legally relevant for 2012 tax year.
Commiss, I'm sorry. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I don't, I don't, I brought this back because I simply, we had a three panel, or a three-person panel the day we acted on it, and since there's been some conversation, I thought maybe we ought to at least revisit it with the full commission here. According to what state's attorney says, I don't think there's any issue that we could perhaps abate 2012, and I'll make a motion if, when you're ready for a motion, but make a motion to abate those, and the others are still due and payable. That's, I have no, I mean, I wasn't on either side of this thing when I brought, asked to bring it back, it was simply I wanted to get it back to the commission for discussion.
Other questions for Kirsten? Thank you. We have the petitioners here this morning. If they would like to make comments, we'd certainly like to hear that before we ask for a motion. If not, you don't need to do that, but you can. And you do need to introduce yourself and give your address, even if we all know who we are.
Deb Klebenoff, 25293473rd Avenue in Baltic. And the only other thing, I, you know, we've read all the laws, too, and so forth, and it pretty much looks that way, as much as a person might try to stretch some of those, they really can't. But the other thing I would ask you to consider might be the interest and fees on 2008 through 11, which is another, I think, $1,500. We're just trying, because it's my understanding that whatever you come back with, we can then go and make payment arrangements to deal with it and get it done and be done. But if we could even, if we could be talking about the amount of tax that's owed, that's all not interest, if you could consider that.
Okay. Question, Deb, I think we have a couple of questions. Sorry.
Actually, my question is for Kirsten.
Commissioner Heiburger? Oh, okay. Just a second, if you would, please. Go ahead.
Oh, I've just, I had a phone call yesterday with the office, and I was under, that was exactly my question, and I was told, and so I'm checking with you, that we cannot abate the fees.
That's what, my understanding is that you're without authority to abate fees and penalties at this point in time, those tax years.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pecus?
Deb, I was wondering, did you make an application as an outside agency this year?
That's the other thing, yes.
Good.
And that was actually due this morning by nine o'clock. It was emailed in, so hopefully that can help us take care of what cannot be abated.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Deb? We do appreciate all your hard work and changes you've made, obviously.
I appreciate everybody's consideration and many conversations, too, so do what we can do to get it handled.
Well, you've been, Commissioner Kelly?
I'd make a motion then to abate the 2012 taxes due in 2013.
Second.
I have a question. Does that include any interest?
No.
Okay. Just want to clarify.
Abate the 2012 interest, yes.
Okay. And my records show that that amount is $2,438.81. I don't know.
Maybe Kyle's going to have to, is he still here?
Well, it's Kyle's sheet, so. You want to come up and explain?
Well, but the interest is based on the total outstanding, is it not?
It's cumulative.
Could you come up to the, so I think the interest would have to be recalculated on the, is it three prior years?
Actually, there's four prior years.
It's a cumulative interest, based on the length that it has been in arrears, and you'd have to get old Pam. Oh, I do taxes, and Pam gets after me. Hey, hmm. You'd have to get with her, she would have the exact amount as of right now. Okay. Oh, the 2012 taxes are not even due.
Well.
They're due now, but actually, the interest is only for the, for the other four years.
Right.
So, yeah, my motion will stand at just abating the 2012 taxes.
There would be, if I may, interest on half of the taxes as of April 1st, correct?
As of May 1st.
May, that's correct.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So, we're in good shape.
Yeah.
We are. Give me a second. As far as timing goes. Any other comments, Commissioner?
Well, we've had presentations regarding this particular property, and this is the one that was a nonprofit that was run by the J.C.'s that fell into disrepair and languished and lost its tax exempt status. I'm sure we all remember reading the article in the paper, which I think was very informative. I do think that's important, that this commission did in fact move it back into its exempt status with what was visioned by Deb and her organization about having a retreat for, you know, I'll say the artistic community in Minnehaw County. And I do think that we have to champion this endeavor, as well as acknowledge the fact that there are taxes that need to be paid. What I envisioned was making an application as an outside agency. Once we start the process of going ahead and moving on the, unfortunately, the foreclosure of that lien on the property, then we can actually enter into some sort of payment arrangement. Now, whether or not that can encompass some of that outside agency money that may or may not be granted through the budget process, that would help, because remember, 70 cents of that tax dollar goes to the school districts, and we are responsible to collect every property tax dollar, not only for the county, but also for the school districts that are out there. So, I would hope that this commission does think thoughtfully and long and hard about whether or not we can embrace this particular endeavor.
Thank you, Commissioner Pecus. Any other comments? Anyone from the audience want to make any comments? If not, we have a motion and a second to abate the 2012 taxes of $2,438.81, and let the remaining balance from 2008 through 11 stand, correct? I think we'll do a roll call vote, since this has been brought back for the second time.
Barth? Hi. Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Aye.
Pecus?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes. Motion unanimously passes, 502 of abate 2012 taxes, and thank you again for all your hard work and for coming back again. We appreciate that.
Next item, number seven, under notice and request, would be the first reading and authorized county audit to publish notice of hearing to consider rezoning number 13-03, rezoning property from the A1 agricultural district to the C commercial district, property described as track two of Rose Edition in the northeast quarter, and a portion of track one, Docket Dorse Edition in the northeast quarter, all in section 26, T 10, or T 101 North-R48W.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Pat.
Pat Herman for Minnehaha County Planning. This is a first reading today for a request to rezone property in Rowena, shown outlined on white on the map. The petitioner's land is currently zoned A1 agricultural. They're requesting to rezone it to C commercial. You look at the map, the red color is existing zoning for commercial in Rowena, and the purple is industrial, the yellow is residential. The future plans for this lot, from the petitioner, Paul Rowe, is to construct many storage units. That would require a conditional use permit. This is in the Red Rock corridor, so they would have to meet the design standards of that corridor. There are two houses just south of the subject property, and the buffering would come into place then with the Red Rock corridor to create a barrier between the two houses and the many storage units. This was before the planning commission on April 22nd, and it was on the consent agenda. There was no one there to, in opposition, and so it comes to you with a unanimous recommendation of approval. So, today is the first reading. We're asking the auditor to publish notice of a public hearing on May 21st at 9:15 a.m. in the same meeting room.
Thank you, Pat. Does anyone have questions, Pat, this morning?
What's the zoning on that little triangle, or the piece that's left now, between the commercial and this? Is that residential?
That's residential, but it's zoned agriculture.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve publication.
Second.
I don't think you need to.
You don't need to?
It's his first reading.
It's first reading.
Then I do have a question for Pat.
We do have a motion.
Commissioner?
Yeah, we do need a motion.
We do need a motion. To publish.
Yeah, but let's go back to, first, you had a question, I believe.
I do have a question. We got rid of one of those streets there, but that street that's shown there still exists.
Yeah, Douglas Avenue exists, and it's in pretty good shape.
Thank you. Any other questions? We do have a motion and a second to publish.
I don't think we do.
For May 21st?
Sort of in and out.
I think we'll do it, just since we have difference of opinion here. Is that okay? Those in favor of publishing the notice of hearing for May 21st, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
So, Mr. Barth made the motion on that, Mr. Chairman?
I'm second.
Cindy's second.
Very good. Item B would be to authorize the county auditor to publish notice of hearing for a special on-sale wine retailers and special off-sale package wine dealers license for the Sulan Renaissance Association at 9:00 a.m. Tuesday, May 21st of 2013.
Any questions? To set the hearing? We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to set the hearing date of the on-sale wine retail and off-sale package for the Sulan Renaissance for May 21st. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
So, Mr. Chair, who, who did the?
Commissioner Pecus was second, and I believe Commissioner Heiburger, or Barth. Nobody's shaking their heads.
I do.
Commissioner Kelly?
Dick did.
Very good. To help our new clerk this morning, you ought to give your name when you make the motion in the second.
Exactly.
So, you can keep up.
I'm not quite as fast as you are.
I think we already noticed.
Not 15 minutes ago.
Would you have a motion and a second? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Good. There's no planning and zoning notices, no petition for compromise. We do have an opportunity for public comment for any person who wants to speak about anything other than what's on the agenda. Good morning, Lynn.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lynn Young, Emergency Management. I just, I didn't have time to prepare a memo because of things going out in the field, but as you've heard, representatives from FEMA, the state of South Dakota, and the county will be out doing what's called a preliminary damage assessment today out in the rural area, and we will visit Garrettson, Brandon, excuse me, Brandon Valley Springs. We may also stop at the county highway shop, and then possibly out in the Split Rock township area. And basically, what that is, is after you declare disaster, the state of South Dakota has 30 days to go out and collect financial information that backs up that disaster resolution. So, today we'll be meeting with the township, excuse me, the finance officers, and anybody else within their organization, maybe the clerk or so that keeps those records, just so we can back up our disaster resolution. Not only will that be happening here in Minnehaha County, but also those other counties involved, including Lincoln County, Turner County, McCook, Hutchinson, and then there's a couple out West River that may qualify also. So, we'll be working through those. It actually works pretty good today, because we have one community, Valley Springs, was cleaned up with the assistance of the county highway department, the community, and then sheriff's office inmates today, or yesterday and today, were in Brandon with the same group of hard-working individual, individuals, and then tomorrow, we'll be in Valley Springs, kind of rolling all of that up. So, it's a good opportunity to, for FEMA to see the debris that's out there, the debris piles that's out there, and then anything else associated with this event. Once again, this information will be rolled up in the next week or so, with all of the other counties involved, and then sent to the governor's office with a, kind of a snapshot, a preliminary estimate of what this event is going to cost the state and their areas to recover from. And then from there, the governor sends that on to the president for a potential disaster resolution and disaster declaration. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but as you've seen, the FEMA folks are in town, and we are working with them to gather the information that they need at the time, at this time, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Lynn? Commissioner Kelly?
Lynn, there's thresholds for county and state. I'm gathering it probably won't be any problem for us to meet our thresholds, but how do you, what do they do in the other counties where there was, like, partial in Lincoln and partial in, in Moody and some of the, or, you know, those areas?
For each county.
Do they, is it all together for the county governments?
For each county to qualify. They have to come up with their threshold. In Minnehaw County, our threshold is 584,000. Lincoln County is about 154,000. So, early on in this event, we tracked costs north of 57th Street and south of 57th Street, until we were pretty clear that we were going to have those costs that we needed to qualify. So, you take your county total, and then you add it to the others, and then the state total has to reach $1.1 million before we're eligible, and we're extremely confident that we're over those numbers with.
And where's the city number thrown in?
The city is, is part of our number.
Our number?
So, we would take the city of Sioux Falls, Brandon, Split Rock, Valley Springs, and then even Minnehaw County's costs, add those together, and our total number. And then each agency, FEMA will work with each level of government and do what are called project worksheets to come up with the exact amount. The one thing in city, the city of Sioux Falls, obviously, is their first six month, or their first six to 10 days were force account, which means their own people doing it, plus contractors' costs. The next, through the extended period, is an actual contract that's been competitively bid, and everything, you come up with those different agencies that you see out on the streets today. We're not doing that in Brandon and Valley Springs and those other communities, just because it doesn't make sense that the amount of debris that's there is significant for that community, but not significant enough for a contractor to be able to come in and make any financial gain on it, so. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Lynn. Any other questions for you?
Well.
Commissioner Pecus?
And isn't it true that any money that we do receive from FEMA that should go, for example, to the city of Sioux Falls, that obviously would help the city, but I, my understanding is that that money needs to be properly accounted for, and that would go to our auditor's office, and this commission then stands responsible for any sort of legislative audit that should come back for a review?
We have a portion of that.
Right.
But not the entire thing, because, you know, like, so we have a portion of it, but not the entire thing, so both governments will actually be responsible in everything. That's why we sit hand in hand at the same table at the Emergency Appreciation Center and work through those contract issues and, you know, some of those things, so that we ensure that both of us come out of this just as well as we went in.
Actually, the last time I checked the regs, I think ultimately the county is responsible for those numbers that are provided from the city.
Yep, and like I said, there's, that's why when this happens, all three state, county fed, along with the city, are sitting there to ensure things happen the way they're supposed to. And, you know, one of the interesting things, too, is, is even within the city, they have a debris clearance contract with the big trucks, they have a tree trimmer contract, and then they have, the third contract is for monitors, and the monitors go out and watch each one of those, because the federal government has learned that if you don't monitor your contractors, that things happen. Now, we don't think that that happens here in the state of South Dakota, but the feds say this is part of the process, so we go through that process to ensure that all those dollars that are spent by local government come back the way they're supposed to, and that there's no questions involved, so. The one, the one thing, too, is, is hopefully, even though it seems like a long time, FEMA does put a six-month timeframe or window on debris removal, and that's what this operation is, so hopefully, at the end of six months, we can be done, instead of some of the long, long-term infrastructure rebuilding that you see as a result of other significant natural events.
Thank you, Lynn. Any other questions? Thank you for your hard work.
Thanks.
Any other opportunities for public comment? Must be warden for the day today, right?
Correct. Darren Young, still your warden for jail. So, I just wanted to take a moment here to publicly thank, starting off with the sheriff and Michelle, for the opportunity to come down to the county and, and be the warden down here, learn another aspect of the criminal justice system. I've talked to them privately, and given them my thanks as well, but I think it's deserving to be public as well, because it took a chance on me, and I hope I did well for them, and it has been a great benefit to my career as well. Also, want to thank you as a commission as well for your support and your help along the way. I've had many conversations with you individually, as a group here, and through different things, and you've both been very helpful and supportive of me as well, and helped to guide me along the way, to make sure that I'm staying on the right track here. I appreciate that. Also, just wanted to say that through this process of being down here, got to see many aspects of the county government, not just the jail, but through commission, and through budget, different things, and have a new appreciation, understanding of what you guys go through, and definitely am much more supportive of the hard work and the hours that you guys put in as well, and many people don't get to see that, and I got to see that the last 21 months down here. Also, through all the, several different agencies, and I won't name them all, but many of them have been also very helpful, welcomed me into Minnehaw County, and helped me, welcomed me in here and helped me along the way as well. So, although my time has been brief, it has been very valuable to me, and I want to thank you for that, so. I will be a friend of the county for long.
Super. Any comments for the warden? Commissioner Barth?
I really feel you've been a wonderful warden for us, and I've enjoyed visiting with you and talking about different things. I'm kind of excited about the governor's CJI program, and I'm, I know that you'll help make it work for the county as well, and I'm, I'm hoping that while I may see you, socially, I never see you professionally.
Very good. That's approved the whole room here. Yes, I, I agree with that as well, and although I have much to learn about it, just, my time down here will also help me, and have an understanding of how it's going to impact, and it is going to impact everybody somehow, and hope that can kind of help with some of that, and if nothing else, foreshadow some things, too, so.
Very good. Commissioner Pecus?
Over 50% of our budget is based on law enforcement, and we have a wonderful partner just right up at 1600 North Drive, State Penitentiary, and we're going to have the right person in the right position, so thank you for your service, and I look forward to working with you.
Yes, thanks. Very good.
Other comments? We do appreciate your leadership, although you say it was a learning experience for you, it was a learning experience for us also, and frankly, the communications that you brought to the group was extremely important to us, so thank you for your investment in us also, so we wish you well, and I know that you will be successful. And if any of us have to go be one of your customers, Jeff is already volunteering.
It wasn't me.
Thank you, warden. We appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck. Any other opportunities for public comment? If not, we'll go to the next item.
Next item would be regular business, and item number 10 would be to consider a motion to set the per diem rate at $250 per day for non-members of the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center. Todd Sheever.
Morning Commissioners. Todd Sheever from the JDC. We will get a contract sent to us pretty quickly by the Department of Corrections runs June through May 31st of next year. That's why I have this in front of you. You can set the rate at whatever you want. I'm recommending it be $250 a day. That's a $5 increase from last year.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions for Todd? Commissioner Kelly?
Todd, what percentage of our clients out there are non...
Non-member?
Non-member.
I don't exactly...
Roughly, I mean, is it 20%?
Probably about 10%.
10%.
Maybe 20%, but certainly the Department of Corrections would be our biggest user. Other counties like Union County and Davidson County do use us on occasion at that rate. So I would say, you know, there's probably, there's, I think there was five kids or six kids yesterday morning that were Department of Corrections kids in our care.
That's a lot, isn't it?
It's a fair amount, but then it can just be a weekend that they were in trouble and back out by yesterday afternoon, so. Still does not cover the total cost. We're still, the cost to house a kid last year at the JDC in 2012 was over $300 per day. That excludes revenue from like the federal school lunch program. That also kicks out, doesn't include the money that we're spending on juvenile detention alternatives where we're paying for beds at Volunteers of America or our home detention program. I excluded those numbers from that since those kids aren't in detention at the time.
Commissioner Pecus?
So we're talking about non-member counties, and I guess the question I have, are the member counties, are they all part of the JDAI initiative, or is it just Minnehaha and Lincoln County?
Right now, it's Minnehaha, and Lincoln County's going to, we're going to really kick things off with them, starting July 1st with the home detention program, providing more services down there and intakes, from what I understand, they will be part of that. The other counties are certainly looking at it. I think the First Circuit is, there've been discussions with them, and I think that they're looking at some things, but for us to provide any type of resources like electronic monitoring, we can't do that down in Charles County. It's too far away. But as far as them deciding, you know, to send kids, not send kids to the JDC, and us possibly helping with development of some alternatives down there, just suggestions on what we've done and how we've used it, we could do that for them. But they're, they don't use us a lot. The other counties got to pay for the beds. Minnehaha County doesn't pay for the beds on a daily basis. So each day, the judge kind of, from a different county, might say, court's too far out, we're not going to hold this kid based on cost and safety.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? I guess, you know, when you say that Minnehaha County doesn't pay for that, I have a little bit of a concern because obviously it costs us significant dollars from a capital expenditure and depreciation to replace the equipment, facility, and all that kind of stuff. So we do have a cost, so to speak.
Right. I'll say, if you want me to send you a bill each month.
No, we don't want to.
If you find money for it, I'll take it. But yes, I mean, on a daily basis, the judges from other counties know that they're paying for that and that they, somebody, a commissioner might actually talk to a judge in a different jurisdiction and say, listen, we can't, we can't afford this at some point, so.
When you say $300 a day, does that include the capital cost, or is that just the operating cost?
That's just operating.
Okay. So there is an additional cost above and beyond the $300 a day, unfortunately, for the county eventually.
Eventually.
Yes. Other comments? Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve the $5 increase.
Second. We have a motion in two seconds. We'll give it to Mr. Pecus. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Todd. We'll go to item number 11.
Item number 11 is to issue a proclamation declaring the month of May is Building Safety Month in Minnehaha County on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Department. Paul?
Paul Clark, the chief building inspector for the county. You know, Minnehaha County is a member of the International Code Council, and every May, the council is, from a nation standpoint, proclaims Building Safety Month, and so our department is asking the commission to vote locally here for Building Safety Month, and we will put posters up in our department and hopefully maybe down the hallway to try to promote building safety here in the county. So tomorrow, that would be the kickoff, as well as we're going to adopt a new I codes, and I appreciate you voting earlier this month to approve those, as we're important to keep up with our communities here in South Dakota as well as around the country. So there's a proclamation. I've asked the chairman if maybe some of the other commissioners can each read a paragraph and not have this southern guy speak all of them.
What's the flavor? Would you each like to read a paragraph, or would you like to hear the southern accent?
I'll read a paragraph.
Okay. We'll make your life a little easier, Paul.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Kelly, if you'd like to start with the first paragraph, we'll just go down the line with the commissioner.
Whereas, Minnehaha County's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and sustainability in the built environment that affect our citizens to give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound and...
Whereas, our confidence is achieved through the devotion of diligent guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, and others in the construction industry who work to ensure the safe construction of buildings and...
Whereas, the international codes, the building codes adopted by Minnehaha County provide safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters and...
Whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our code officials who assure us of safe, effective, and livable buildings and...
Whereas, Building Safety Month, code officials keep you safe. The theme for Building Safety Month 2013 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to assure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and sustainable, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local agencies.
Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners proclaims May to be Building Safety Month for Minnehaha County, proclaim this 30th day of April 2013. Thank you, Paul, for coming, and thank you for your work.
We need to have a motion on that, don't we?
We need a motion in a second.
Barth makes a motion to approve this resolution.
Second by Heiburger.
We have a motion in a second to approve the proclamation. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item number 12 would be the presentation of the 2012 Annual Report of the Minnehaha County Public Defender's Office. Tracy.
Good morning, Tracy.
Good morning. Tracy Smith, Public Defender's Office. I'm here today to present the 2012 Annual Report and caseload analysis for the Public Defender's Office. As you can see from our 2012 Annual Report, that last year, we closed 6,298 cases, which was up from the 5,514 cases we closed in 2011, which was a 14% increase over the course of a year. The cases that I would know which were of significance, at least for what I thought, was on DWI first offenses, it was an 8.4% increase. For serious felonies, class one felonies and above, where anybody was facing 50 years up to a life sentence, that was a 19% increase over the course of a year. We were up in our felonies 11% over where we were the year before. Juvenals, as we had talked about just a little bit ago with the JDAI initiative, we continue to increase over the course of the last two years that we've had JDAI in effect. We continue to go up in our appointments for juvenile offenses, and we were up 3% in our appointments for juveniles. We currently have 22 attorneys in our office by National Legal Aid and Defender Association standards. With the amount of cases that we are carrying, we should have had 25.71, equaling 26 attorneys to carry the caseload that we should have been handling for 2012. Our cost per case, based on the cases that we were handling, averaged out to be $340 per case, which were still very cost-effective for our budget and the Public Defender's Office, for our budget and what we are spending. When you compare that to the cost per case in 1981, when Minnehaha County decided to open the Public Defender's Office, and the average cost per case was $271, we're still doing very well in this regard. A cost per, what constitutes a case? We don't look at each criminal file number. We don't look at each charge. A case, which is, when you talk about a unit of service as far as what's provided to the public, we look at each court order appointing a officer. So a case can include multiple file numbers, it can include multiple courtroom proceedings. So a person could have, say, a DWI, a failure to appear, and a no insurance ticket. We look at the whole package and what constitutes a case, and then, for purposes of analysis, we take the most serious charge that that person's facing, and then we use that to calculate our case analysis as far as determining what should be of significance in determining, determining how to wait caseloads. And then there's a different waiting system for each case. One attorney can handle 400 misdemeanors versus one attorney can handle 150 felonies over the course of a year, but that could still include multiple cases within that. Does anyone have any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Tracy? Commissioner Barth?
I have a couple, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
Tracy, I noticed that your department costs less than half as much as the private attorneys, and so obviously, we're better off if we have you folks or the public advocate take those cases. Do you see us getting increased dependence on the private attorneys?
If it gets to the point where we're not able to adequately meet the needs of our clients, I do see a point where, if we're not able to meet our caseload, that more cases will have to end up being funneled through the private sector.
Tracy, on an anecdotal basis, because I doubt if you have any statistics, have you seen any effect from the Safe Home project on your clientele?
I do think Safe Home provides a great service. I think having the Safe Home has been great because having their monitoring our clients, they're able to help with making sure they show up for court. They've been a great help as far as making sure that people are getting less unlawful occupancies, public consumptions, those types of things. So they've been a great help. I've had one client that I was able to refer to them yesterday who keeps getting picked up over and over and over on unlawful occupancy charges here at one of the local businesses, and was able to refer this particular client to Safe Home, and hopefully, by getting him into this program, he will hopefully keep this store owner happy, and at the same time, will be able to help my client get into this program so that he will...
Somewhere else he'll go.
Quit going through the jail and end up with costing the county, I don't know what it is, $70 a day to be in jail for weeks on end. Each time he gets arrested on these class two offenses and having to go in front of the judge, each time he gets appointed me to represent him, he's having to pay $82 an hour for an attorney. So I know a lot of people are frustrated with this particular client, so I know that just having Safe Home there is a great service to a number of these types of individuals.
I guess, you know, one of the things that has always got my goat is the cost of alcohol in our community, and, you know, just last year, in your department alone, well, in public defender, public advocate, the private attorneys, almost, you know, $3.3 million. And, you know, clearly, we get no revenue from alcohol, and yet it's an incredible cost to our community. It's not a question. But I would ask, do you have any idea on how Governor Dugard's CJI plan may affect your group?
At this point, it's too early to tell. I'm very, I'm looking forward to all the programs that the Criminal Justice Initiative came up with. There's a lot of talk about probation and drug courts. I think Second Circuit has one of the best drug court programs in the state, and I think it's very receptive, he's very receptive towards treatment as opposed to incarceration, and I think that will reduce recidivism and also reduce the need for incarceration and hopefully relieve some of the burden on Minnehaha County and the cost of incarceration and the cost of continuing to have people funnel through the state's attorney's office and funnel through our office. So I'm hopeful, but I think it's too early to tell.
Thank you.
Other questions for Tracy? If not, thank you. We did get a copy of the report that we can all spend more time looking through, and we do appreciate your time this morning, so thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Item number 13 would be the Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Does anyone have any liaison reports this morning? Commissioner Barth?
I apologize. I do have one. I went to an ambulance, Rural Ambulance Association meeting this week, and they all reported great success in raising money from the townships, something we've asked them to do. And of course, they've turned in their applications for county funding going forward, and they're hoping that the fact that they've done this will encourage us to smile upon them. There was quite a disparity between the way the different counties, different services tried to raise money from the townships. One ambulance district would write the township and say, we'd like a contribution, and the townships would send them 20 bucks, just like it was for a little league team. And the other ones would say, we want 100 bucks a section, and that's the tendency that they have going now is that they're, and some that have smaller areas are actually getting more than 100 bucks a section. So they've really stepped up to make the effort to fund themselves, and I think we should appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports, comments? If not, we'll go to item 14, new business. Any new business?
Mr. Chairman? We've got this letter here from asking for another entrance on a property. Where will this be going?
That will need to go to planning and zoning. It's a request from the school, or I mean, from a property owner to the school district and not to us at this point, but Robert, if you'd like to make a comment about that?
The only comment I would make at this point is that that's a letter that our office received yesterday. We wanted to make sure all of you were aware of it. We also provided a copy to planning and zoning and to highway. It may at some point come before you as a normal agenda item. That's not, there are not anything, isn't anything in the works to do that at this point. We just wanted to provide that more on an information basis.
At this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Any old business? If not, we need to go to executive session for pending litigation, personnel, and contract negotiations.
Move to adjourn to executive session for personnel and, or for litigation and...
Personnel and contract negotiations.
Second. Heiburger.
We have a motion in a second to go into executive session for litigation, personnel, and contract negotiations. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously.